Alright, I got nine o'clock on June 2nd, 2025. I will call the Chickasaw County Board of Supervisors to convene. For all members present, I'll have Board Secretary Julie Shekelton. Is there an approval of the agenda for today? Sorry. Motion by Travis and by Scott to approve June 2nd. Agenda as presented, any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Approved minutes from last Monday, the 27th of May. Any corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Isaac, second by Steve to approve the minutes from May 27th. Any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Approved minutes from May 28th, 2025. Wednesday morning.
Ooh.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Travis and by Scott to approve the May 28th minutes, any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, anybody else opposed, motion is carried. Are you going to approve giving EBS permission to take $77.02 from partial self-funded account to clear the negative in the dental trust account?
So I had given you guys your receipts and disbursement report, and on the bottom of the page, it shows our accounts and what their ending balances are. And as you can see, the last one, dental trust account, has a negative of $77.02. I was written by Jennifer McMillan with World Insurance Associates, and she would like to get it cleaned up and put it to zero. And she said that you guys would okay it. All I had to do was let her know, and then she would take the account out of the partial self-funded. Okay.
So do we know why in July it was a positive 82, and then in August it went down 102, uh, 150 bucks?
I do not know that, but you guys, if you, um, the county must have had some type of account for the trust. And the only thing I can think of is that, um, let's see.
Administration fees.
Well, that's what I was thinking, administration fees to clean it up. Because when you guys had a balance, and then they took the administration fees out of it, and then it left a negative.
So this is that dental, dental trust fund, um...
We pay the administration side of it, but we don't pay any of the premiums, so. Negative balance of $77.02. Been away for about six, seven months now, so. The action would be to take it out of the partial self-fund, PSF fund through EBS, which is held by IGHCP. The trust fund is our money, so the county's money. Just needs a motion to use the trust fund to pay the dental trust account $77.02. Is there a second? Second. Motion by Travis and by Isaac to approve paying EBS $77.02 from our partial self-fund account. Any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion is carried. We've jumped down to acknowledge one month additional insurance for permanent layoff notice and severance agreement for Julie Shekelton, Board of Health. You guys saw the agenda from the Board of Health last week. Lisa talked to me, I think Wednesday, and they approved it three to one vote to allow Julie Shekelton to get that one month of health insurance. I can just state that a couple of weeks ago, I received an email from Lisa sent to Ann, wondering if it was too late to do this. I said it was Board of Health decision, not the Board of Supervisor's decision, so. This is where we're at, to acknowledge it for the payroll requirement. Remember, they didn't use our agreement, they used their own. They added the next agenda item also, so about the $500 per year of service. Again, both decisions by the Board of Health, we just acknowledge it for payroll reasons. If you had any other questions, talk to the Board of Health Chair or Lisa. Is there a motion to acknowledge what they did?
No motion to acknowledge.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott to acknowledge one month additional insurance for permanent layoff notice and severance agreement for Julie Shekelton, um, that works for public health through the Board of Health. Any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion is carried. Just go back up to 9:05, but I think you checked, there was no public comment today.
Yeah.
Perfect. Acknowledge Chickasaw County Board of Health offered layoff employees $500 for each year of service as a severance package. Julie Shekelton is entitled then to $1,000. Again, acknowledge this, Board of Health voted it three to one last week to let this occur. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Well, most probably it's a Julie, it's a Julia, but I think, um, it's more three dollars.
Quite, yeah.
Now, it's $500 for each year of service, severance package, Julie Shekelton $1,000.
Is there a second? Motion by Steve, is there a second?
I'll second it, you don't like it.
This is more common. Motion by Steve, second by Travis to acknowledge the Chickasaw County Board of Health offered, laid off employees $500. Uh, this individual will get $1,000, Julie Shekelton. Any discussion? I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Dave, can you wrap up the vertical policy in two minutes?
Probably.
Discuss county vertical policy and use of personal vehicle.
So Renee found out and talked to Harland, Harland did not require this at all. So there's no requirement from Harland to require this. Um, but I talked to Harland attorney last week, and he advised that you guys cannot, uh, tie payment of reimbursement for mileage to requirement for insurance. You cannot say unless you have X insurance, we're not going to reimburse you for your mileage. You can, however, tie, uh, use of county vehicle and use of the personal vehicle to the mileage. So you can say, hey, um, if you're going to use your personal vehicle for something and get unaccounted time, we want you to have insurance for that reason. So you can't tie it to the actual mileage of the subject, you can't tie it to use of the personal vehicle. That brings up another question, and if you tell people, hey, um, you can't use your personal vehicle for our county business unless you have insurance, um, guessing the person's going to come and say, well, I have county business to do that provided me a vehicle to do so. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, he indicated that's all over the board. Some of the counties, some of the cities that he has require it, some of them don't. Um, obviously, the liability is going to be there regardless, litigation's going to come regardless. Um, so he says it's up to you, so I think I'm still where I was last Monday. Um, if you're going to do it, then put a high enough number around there where it's going to be meaningful and make a difference, and hopefully help solve some of the problems. If there is an accident, then go after their insurance first, and maybe not come after ours. Um, or just figure that completely it not required at all. That's kind of, I'm still the same as I was last Monday.
So yeah, just eliminate, uh, use of personal vehicle under subsection one, limit that to paragraph sentence. And then to clean it up, move two back to page one under the use of county on vehicles and add number eight. That would say, use of personal vehicle for official county business shall be discouraged unless the county goes now to it.
I think that's fair, yep.
Did everybody else have any discussion, or is that the way you guys want to see it? We're going to delete that whole paragraph about the limits, and then move two then down to use of county on vehicles and add number eight. And then revise today on June 2nd. If that's okay, is there a motion to change this vertical operational policy like said?
On here.
Second. Motion by Isaac, second by Steve to approve the new version of the Chickasaw County Vertical Operational Policy with the deletion of use of personal vehicle as number one, and then movement number two to the front page and add number eight. Any discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Alright, got 9:11. Meet with PR Ventures LLC, owner of the home. Good morning Brett.
Good morning.
Discuss taxes on mobile home at the PR Ventures location and back tax owed by tenants that have lost. So we got the treasurer with us. Have you shared that piece of paper with them?
Yeah.
Perfect. You guys got that in your board packet, um, I guess we'll let you guys discuss if you want.
Yeah, we're just asking because we want to clean up the property, and we've got people that just left their trailers. Just left them, I mean, they're, they're gross, but we have to clean them up. So we need the taxes taken care of, the back taxes taken care of, before we can kind of move on. So we're just looking for...
Yep. So Matt Isaac, can you give an update then? There's two that are, are these, you go ahead.
There's three of them that have tax sales certificates on them. Um, so... $481 tax sales certificate, a $233 tax sales certificate, and then another $233 tax sales certificate. So, I mean, that complicates things obviously, because then it's an investor who just owes that money versus the company tax.
How many do you guys actually, uh, what's given the ownership to?
We've given, there's one right behind the restaurant, there was a Jesse Bloom one. Um, that's that blue and white one right behind the restaurant. Um, I'm trying to think what number that one is.
The Jesse Bloom one, that's one that just has delinquent taxes on it. It will go to tax sale if we don't do anything.
And then Amy and Watt is going to tax sue?
Oh, that one got paid on Friday.
Okay.
And then there's one that we own, uh, we do only own one, 2059. Yeah, 2059, we own that one. But, uh, I mean, our, our intent is to take them out and put tiny homes back there, clean it up. Just kind of improve it, so we're kind of stuck. We can't really go in there and start demolishing and all that stuff out, so this is taken care of.
So you only have title to 2059 and 20, you have title to 2060, but you haven't found the title yet, or?
2060.
That'd be just...
Yes, we have the title signed over to us, uh, no bill, you know, we haven't paid any money for the trailer here. It's just a no bill sale, it's for zero now. We do have that title. That's the only one we have a title for.
It's the only one that hasn't, don't have.
What's on a 2055 then?
2055?
That, Amy, wait, um, they're, they live in that one, so there's residents in that one.
So we have three that already have a tax certificate and one that you have the title to, but you haven't found the title yet, that owes taxes. Is that right?
I have, so I have the title to 2060, which is the Jesse Bloom one. Um, I don't have, there's a title being transferred, sent to us for the Shannon Lilly one, the 2051, um, because that was supposed to have been transferred to the previous owners of the trailer park. It never got transferred, but they, the owner is making a copy and just signing it over to us. And then 2053, Benjamin Gott, um, that one's vacant. Um, I think they're at Alavista living. I was going to go see if I could try to get the title from them to sign over. And then 2069, Patterson Jessica, they're out, they just left it. Um, they're actually in Ionia, and I've been trying to get the title signed over for that one too, but it's kind of just, we're kind of stuck, I mean. I, I can go to the sheriff's office and get them garbed or junked, or you know what I mean? That they could be tore down. It's just all this back tax stuff that's going to kind of hold us up, I think, for us to go farther and start paying, and, you know, I want to make sure we're clear, you know?
Touch it, yeah.
Before I start, before we start putting some stuff on there and, and making it, you know, better. We'd just rather have everything taken care of, so when we start putting the homes on ourselves, then we're responsible for it, and it's ours, and, you know, it's, it's under us than not worry about somebody else trying to take care of our stuff.
So, so are you asking the board to evade some of these taxes, or what, what are you asking?
Yes, 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 because we've already paid for a couple out of pockets, and with cleaning them up and, I mean, spent $2,000, $4,000 paying them up, and then the back taxes were paying, it's kind of dipping a little bit into our pockets, but, you know, no income coming.
Does the tenant in 2053 plan to stay? So you'll just have to go in there if you get all of these?
2053, they're gone.
And which one was, uh...
The weight would be 2055, they're planning, they're staying. Our goal is to build some cottages, offer them, do you want to go into these and rent these from us, and then we get rid of the trailer? That's the whole goal of our project. We want the cottages put in, trailers gone. So when you come into town, that's what you see.
One or two that we have, if we can manage to get out a few of them, we can clean that little area up and get some progress going. But it's right now, we're, we're still all over the place back there.
So Ray's standing over my shoulder, so I ask him. So this is in or outside city limits, and then how are these assessed? They own the ground, but, uh...
They own the ground, but not the mobile homes. The mobile homes are, this tax is the mobile home tax, semi-annual tax. It's a personal property tax, you might say, the licensing tax. It's not the real estate tax, because they're not identified as real estate. When they're located in a mobile home park, they're not assessed as real estate. They pay the semi-annual mobile home tax, based on square feet and square foot.
So on Beacon, Dave, it looks like the east side is in the county.
And the line is right there, that's what I asked.
They're limited, they're going to be limited.
The other four that are behind the buses is city jurisdiction. The county has jurisdiction.
But they're taxed the same because they're in mobile...
They're all, they're all debt and same regardless of their location.
Yes.
The line is right down the street.
Right. That's what I asked.
The restaurant's all in the county, though.
Yes.
Now, does they have jurisdiction over those that are inside the city or not? I don't know. Because, you know, they debated the taxes on it. But the, the, the...
The outstanding, the outstanding taxes are against the structure itself, not against the real property.
Right.
So it's not as though there's any lien, any problem with the property, the structure itself, so. I mean, and I'm not going to give advice, give legal advice, but if someone decided to take those homes and remove them, that isn't going to affect the property itself. It just affects the taxes that run with the home itself.
Correct.
And if they get destroyed, what is, and the back taxes are due yet?
The, you know, it does, you know, the way current law reads, it doesn't become a lien on the property itself, on land. And that's the issue with, with buildings on these lands that currently have is there's still a way to collect back taxes on those. There is means to collect back taxes on personal property, property tax, buildings on these lands.
It's in a good way, it's good.
Yes, yes, yes.
Should clarify, it's still a lien, it's just, there's not a big way to, it can't fly.
Yeah, it wouldn't.
So does those back taxes then travel with the owner of that trailer?
Yes.
It has no effect on us necessarily?
Correct.
It's just for the property.
So if we dump the trailers out of the landfill, then that's where they're going?
That's between you and your private attorney or... I want to make sure I'm clear. The county's not, that's why I make sure I'm clear when you ask. So I want to make sure what we're doing here this morning. I mean, we're, we're here to help you, obviously, and it's an admirable thing, you want to clean it up. That's kind of an issue since I got here, almost four years ago, I've dealt with it, so, hope dealt. So I think it's very admirable. I just want to make sure we're clear, what we're giving advice on, or we're not giving advice on.
But we just want to make sure we're not going to get a bill saying, oh, it's not you owe this because we took this out or cleaned it up, you know, I mean, we're, yeah.
I have a question now. Um, with the mobile tax, doesn't it follow the home though?
Yeah, it follows the home, not the, not the...
Yeah, okay.
That's what we're saying.
But if the home is owned by the new owners, the old tax is with the old?
It doesn't, it, again, stays with the mobile homes. It does not follow, does not transfer to the land. Because under Iowa law, mobile homes that are located in a mobile home park are not real estate. They pay the semi-annual mobile home tax. Whereas mobile homes located outside of a mobile home park are assessed and taxed as real estate. That's the key differences.
This is in a mobile home park, and this isn't identified as a mobile home park.
But do we have the authority then to abate these taxes that are old?
I don't know why you would. First off, I wouldn't advise you to do that considered unless they have title to them. I mean, because then you're giving someone else's taxes with the home that they get titled to. That seems contrary to a public benefit for that.
Correct.
Um, so unless they have title to them, I wouldn't consider them. The other part is, are they able to clean up the property without having the taxes paid? And since it's not a lien against the property, answer would be yes. Um, now how they get those out of there and how they title them, or how they deal with ones that are there, is, is a legal matter for them to choose here, in my, in my opinion. That's how they do that. I mean, whether their counsel or someone advises them, hey, pull them out of there and give them a 30-day notice, an 80-day notice, and park them somewhere else, or junk them or do whatever. That's not for me, I'm just working aside. But I think what they're asking is, is can we clean that up? And if we take those steps based upon advice from somebody, whether it be counsel or not, what effect does it have on the real estate? And I think what Ray's saying is it doesn't have any effect on the real estate. The property's still going to be free and clear at any means, um, from a tax perspective. Unless I'm just staying out of it.
Property tax perspective, that, you know, where you own, what happens to mobile homes will have no effect on the land.
Correct.
Because I think, I mean, I think if we start building county homes on there now, I think the city's already changed that, that we can put tiny homes in there as long as we stay at our 800 square feet, below 800 square feet. I think that Casey's already clarified that they've kind of changed it, or the ordinance or something. I don't know if that's, he had mentioned that.
That would be only on the city.
Only on the city side.
On the city side.
Yeah, no, so, I mean...
We have, we have our own zoning in the county, but because it's within a two-mile radius of the city limits, then the city has zoning juries over that.
So that we, the same zoning then for that, those there that can go on for the...
Yes.
So we can just...
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess, uh, my advice to your attorney would be, I don't, I don't think it's, it's worth considering maybe at this point. Um, you know, if they have struggles or running different complications when they're trying to figure out... Anything I could consider about this point, I don't think, you know, it's, it's a good public policy, in my opinion, to bait.
Any other questions, concerns?
You guys just agree with us, agree with, yeah, that's my advice. And they can come, I mean, they can work out and see what they can get done. If other issues arise, or questions arise, I'll, we can come back and have discussion again. The circumstances change.
If I get the titles, if I get the titles signed over, that'd be better, or does it matter? It even matter if I get the titles?
That's, that's up to these guys, but I think that would change things in my eyes. That would make it worth considering at least. I mean, whether or not we want to do that is up to these guys, and I don't think we'd think about that. Um, but I would say there's no way, and that guy would advise that you do it without you having a title. Because that's just forgiving some private person's taxes for no, no purpose.
So, okay, so then with Jesse's right now, we do have the titles for that one behind...
Yeah, 20...
2060?
2060. And I don't know what that's back tag, that's one that's going to go to the...
Yeah, sale.
Let it sail.
So there's two 23 right now on that one.
So probably most likely a lot of that's interest, or not?
Um, probably like a quarter of it, maybe, but...
Because I guess, if this is the, and I'm not, I'm on the scale, if this is the route the board wants to go down, if one of you obtains some of the titles, to me, I'd want to do it in one piece as opposed to piecemeal, to make sure it's going to get done. And to me, we'd probably want to sign some sort of memorandum of understanding or something that says, hey, we're agreeing to do this in exchange for you doing this within a certain time period, or having the steps to do that.
I have it done this week.
We don't...
I just want that back to government. Private practice, we're, we're, we're not, we're, we're not, we're, no, it's, yeah. But, uh, that's kind of, I guess what we're trying to do is try to stop this one from getting into a bunch of other...
Having another third party.
But a third party involved is, is what the...
At least that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, some there are going to take it up, or it's going to be a pick. Now on that one, split the taxes, that now, maybe, would be a three of our, one to tax them. Yes, some investors are going to get sure of this ticket, so, so, um... It's, we, we need to look at that a little bit further, um, but to get the details.
I mean, I didn't bring a title, I got it to set it home.
I think the thing is they want to do a lot, lots of...
Well, I don't know if we're going to be able to do, I mean, the mail, we should be getting the mail, the one for the Shannon Lilly one, he said that was sent the mail, I think he... So they sent paperwork to get it read in and sent back to them, and she was going to sign it over. If I got it...
And I guess this is something for you to discuss with, with members you speak with about this, but it doesn't make a difference. I mean, it doesn't even make a difference whether you have title to it or whether there's back taxes. I mean, if it's not enough, if it's not running considerable park, and it's not running with the land, does it make a difference whether the taxes are cleared of that? I mean, it doesn't make a difference whether you could clear the taxes and then take it out, or take it out and the taxes are still on them, they're not going to be attached to land, it's not going to affect the property, the real property itself. So it doesn't even matter whether the taxes are still owing to that person for that structure that's not on your property. That's a question for your legal counsel to answer, so how do you do that?
Trying to make sure it's not coming back on us, because we've already paid a back, a back tax to get rid of one ourselves, because that's what we thought we had to do. And if we don't have to do that, then that's, I mean, that's...
But I understand your question, that would be a question for your, someone else to answer as to what your liability would be if you said, hey, we know there's taxes owing on it, we think it's vacant, we send a notice, whatever it might be, and then after 90 days, 30 days, and you decide to remove it, I mean, or junk it, or do something else with it. What liability would that expose you to, to the owner who still has title of that? As far as the county's concerned, the tax's concerned, it has no effect on us. Because that versus so is the taxes who has the title, and it's not going to affect your property, whether it's sitting there, whether it's sitting 10 miles from here, or in 10 pieces from here.
Right.
So I think that's something we probably need to clear up with, remember, it's helping me to figure out how to get it all switched out there before we potentially go to the next step. But at this time, I, I don't think, I, I don't, I would advise them to, to jump into this at this point until you have someone clarity as to what you're going to do with the, with them themselves, with themselves.
Okay.
Does that help?
A little bit.
I, I mean, I know... I'm not trying to avoid any questions, I'm not...
I know, we've asked, I know, we've asked Judy about it, our attorney, and she has said, you know... I know, we've asked, I know, we've asked Julia about it, her attorney, and she has said, you know, she doesn't feel that we're responsible for any back taxes, anything like that, that is not against us, it's just, if you're going to have to clean it up, you need to go get a junk certificate, junk them, and whoever deals with it, they're going to deal with it, because it's going to be gone, it's just going to be gone.
Well, that's probably good advice, I think she's giving you advice, you'd feel a lot better if all of them out of there junking, and if you owned it, then all of them else is probably out junked.
Right, and that's what they're trying to do, I mean, just.
Give them thirty, sixty day notice to remove, if they don't remove it, you have the right, you know, you have the notice to them, when you've given it forth.
I mean, and I think that's exactly what we're going to do, I mean, I mean, I want to give them not much time, because we've already been waiting on them, you know, for six months, five, five months.
I would say we're looking for a, and she called me too, ready to talk with us, but I just don't feel like this time, this board should, should jump into the fray this time.
But we were just trying to keep everybody, you know, we didn't want somebody to drive by and say, oh, you guys should have done this, or did do this, we're just trying to make sure everybody knows how we're doing.
No, but I think both the city and the county would appreciate that one step, so.
Yes. So, so we're dead in the group, or which is a little bit.
Wonderful. There you go.
Are we done?
All right, thanks, guys.
Did you guys sign in?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, you don't have to sign out, no.
Thank you. You have some questions, say something. Yep, you're welcome.
Um, Nigel, is he out there?
Joel.
Got nine thirty-one with me, with EMS director Joel Nitz, this is Joel.
Morning.
Discuss the part-time position of EMS.
So I sent you guys an email last week, I guess, start off, any questions on that, explain anything, clarify anything?
It's on your sheet, you got to break over it, which is nice. So the twelve hour shifts, like in economy from March, April, May, those are twelve hour shifts.
Correct.
So like, Mr. Anderson there?
Yeah.
He has fourteen for the month of March, that's on the top of this full time?
Correct. Yeah.
And like you, since you're here, you picked up with no extra pay because of your contract with us, you picked up seven twelve hour shifts, and then April, you picked up additional one hundred and forty-four hours, which is twelve times twelve?
Correct.
Can you highly suggest the other ones to pick up shifts, or they?
Yeah, we can, so you know, the, the requirement is two, right, two twelve hour shifts or twenty-four, that's the requirement on everybody. It's hard, just because of the fact that, I mean, these, these folks all work somewhere else full time. Um, and, you know, um, like I know, and, and he wouldn't mind me saying his name, Josh Powers, he's a Waterloo fireman, uh, he comes up and he does, uh, two to three twenty-four hour shifts a month, every month, and he's as solid as they come. But he's so far out that he's not going to be coming back. You know, as you go down the list, a lot of the paramedics especially, um, come from a ways away, Brad Schmidt comes from Grundy Center, he's too out, too far out for that backup shift. So we're really kind of strangled on having the right person fit the area that they can take the backup for the, you know, through whatever dollars an hour from home, um, and, and that they're close enough to respond in that kind of a timeframe.
So I get here, you know, when you have more staff, it's certain months scheduled twelve hour shifts, it doesn't matter, it's just, the old man does that, is we'll keep up on training.
Yep.
And more payroll folders.
Right, yeah.
Does not add, we looked into that, does not add workers comp, but do not add, because it's all based on the salary.
Yes. Yeah, we, um, you know, and, and the good or bad part about it is, like, I'm, I'm responsible for making sure that everybody's training stays up. I mean, like, when the harassment training comes out, I, I have to ensure that everybody has completed that. When the, you know, new driving policy that came out, I had to make sure everybody understood it, reviewed it, and signed it. Um, and, and all that falls back on me. Uh, as far as medical training, keeping everybody up to date on that, um, we have a pretty good system for that. And also, you know, a lot of these people, like I said, work somewhere else, so their, their employment is dependent on keeping their license up, but it is something that we do monitor and watch, and we do provide, um, training at our regular meetings for them, so, I mean, that's a good thing as well.
So your new hire, Berto, he had a lot of hours too?
He did, uh, that makes, makes me nervous as well, losing him. Um, and, you know, and like, and he's in the same boat as Brandon or Carly. And you, you'll see Carly on there, doesn't typically pick up backup, she lets her husband Tyler do it, you know, they both can be gone at the same time, so, um, she lets Tyler do that, so he can keep his skills fresh as well. So, yeah, it's certainly not a, not a anomaly, it's a trend that we're seeing across, across a lot of departments. Um, but, uh, in the, so I sent out employee perspective surveys, um, and I probably got ten back. And I've seen a couple of comments on there of, we need to hire more staff because we're sick of getting the calls, hey, can anybody pick up, can anybody pick up? And then, and I, it's, unfortunately, it's going to push people to, push them away. It's, uh, it's, we're running into summer, summer's always our hardest month. Uh, June, July, May, June, July, August, September, tough kids go back to school, everybody plans vacations, everybody plans stuff out. But, um, we, you know, we will keep, keep doing what we can do. Unfortunately, and as you guys know, we lose our backup crew, we lose the ability to take transfers, and that's a big source of income for us. Uh, Floyd County calls us very frequently to take transfers, um, I think we had a total of five requests from them just over Memorial Day weekend, five or seven requests, and we took as many as we could, um, but it's, their service over there isn't maybe staffed as well as it could be at times, um, and if, you know, so having that backup for them to come back us up, should we, you know, have two nine one one calls at the same time, I don't know if they'll always be able to provide that. I think every service around us is having some, some growing pains, but, um.
Would like anybody on the survey group to be interested in, I mean, as long as they're able to sit?
I agree, and they have, yeah, well, they have, um, it's, uh, um, very dependent on time of year, you know, Garrett and Alan get busy in the spring and fall farming, and, um, Sharon's good, um, he picks up when he can, but he can't go by himself, and so then, where, you know, Katie, um, Callie will be going on maternity leave here before too long, so, you know, that just leaves for certified providers down there, that just leaves, um, Garrett and Katie. And kids are out of school for the summer, and Katie's husband works full time, so, um, they, they do help them again, for, and we're very grateful for that, they do an awesome job. It's, uh, they were in service most all of the weekend for their days, which is good to see, that's all part of the time.
These two that you have on the agenda, is it one or two?
So, I went back through our applications of people I had talked to, and I actually came up with three EMTs and one driver that we can discuss if that's something you want. If that's something the board is interested in, um, certainly adding, uh, these four names would help, uh, fill a lot of the voids. Um, especially the one being a driver, I mean, that's, that's pretty big, just, not only to maybe get them interested in becoming an EMT, but also, I mean, their, their thirteen dollar an hour position when they're activated, or when they're not, it's pretty cost effective to have them on our roster. Uh, the other three driver, the other three EMTs, uh, based on, uh, the current, um, hiring schedule that we established at the beginning of the service, um, they would range from anywhere from fifteen sixty-six an hour to fifteen ninety-nine an hour, depending if they're activated or current backup. And they're, they're non-activated, and they're non-activated hours, you know, it's a four, so.
What do you guys think of? There is some costs, we know that, kind of, mention the areas.
There's costs for not doing it, because we'll have more overtime. To me, like, it's a little rare to have these part-time.
These guys are not going to be zeros, are they?
What's that?
These people aren't going to be zero, are they?
Which, the ones.
One, one.
Yeah, no, no, they're all, um, three of them, three of the, all, three of the EMTs that currently have, uh, on the list, um, they all work for another service, and this is just, they all live within the response area for the backup, this is the end on their off days. And the driver, um, she lives close to town here, she works at the ethanol plant. She would make a good addition to, and help with the daytime coverage that we seem to be having some trouble with.
All four of these have current applications on file?
Yes, they were out of the last round.
Anything else you guys did here, or you guys make a recommendation to add three part-time EMTs and one part-time driver for the EMS department? By adding four part-time people, you constantly watching the thirty hours minimum, maximum, whatever you want to say for health insurance?
That is the goal, yeah. Do you guys find this spreadsheet beneficial? Is this something you would like to order me?
I think it's nice to see every three months, so.
Correct.
Because there's some of them that you hadn't added that are on zeros, and I think you explained the reasons why. But then a lot of the yellows are in zeros too. Yellow is strikes for area, and just for the public, if they're listening, um, the red was.
ARS providers that live outside of the response district.
So what we're seeing here is a chart that shows the red and yellow highlighted of those set individuals. And the blue are the full-time people that are, some of them are picking up some very hefty shifts. Awesome, besides their full-time duties. No, I like this spreadsheet, so. Any more discussion or information you guys need, or is there a motion? Just want to make sure, like I asked, current application on file?
Yeah.
Background checks, will need to be done, or if not, already done?
They are.
I guess, you guys want names, you guys want start dates, or do you want to see the board? Are you going to call them to see if they will take it?
Yeah, so I talked to all of these folks, and they know that I was coming before, meaning today to bring my names forward. Two of them, uh, two of them out of the four, um, had applied for the full-time position, um, and at the time, when I, we chose to go with another applicant, I asked them if they would be interested in part-time, and they said, most of them.
I guess, I hear you know, whatever, you want to release the names, and?
Yeah, I certainly can, and I'll, I'll get all, mail you all of them, so you have their parts calling and everything, when, when I get back to your office. Uh, first EMT part-time, Brad McKenna, uh, wage of fifteen ninety-nine, start date of June ninth, that'd be the next big year. And a second name, Shaila Mae Jones, wage of fifteen sixty-six, part-time EMT, start of June ninth. Third EMT part-time, it would be Haney Norby, fifteen ninety-nine, start date of June ninth. And the last part-time driver, Caitlin Jacobs, thirteen dollars an hour, starting June ninth.
Is there a motion to approve? Maybe all four at the same time on June ninth with those set wages, as part of your scheduling for wages, right?
Yeah. And that, that schedule will stay the same for the five-year duration? I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Um, with that wage, uh, for discussion, motion by Steve, thing by Isaac, to approve the four hires part-time starting June ninth with different wages, um, do they get the three percent July first?
They will not, um, because they have not been employed for six months.
Correct, okay. Any other discussion, comments? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other, also for me, anything to think of?
All right, got nine thirty-six, County Conservation Director Chad, good morning Chad.
Morning.
We discussed bids for lawnmower, all right, so I started this about a month ago, knowing that we budgeted twenty-five, thirty-five thousand out of county betterment for, um, either concrete pad we had discussion on, or a potential purchase of a lawnmower. So, fair enough, I reached out to Chad about two, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
And asked him if he could get some specs and some, uh, bids for lawnmowers. He's provided them into my mailbox last week, um, I asked Sheila to put them in envelopes, I have not seen the bids, Sheila got them out of the mailbox right away. Did talk to the county attorney about this, gave you got anything to add, but our discussion is, um, we went out with specs for DSO and Dexter.
Diesel, zero turn, and the largest deck they could get.
Yeah, largest, basically, we just told them largest diesel motor they had on a zero turn of seventy-two inch deck.
You see June second today, so this purchase would not happen until we pass appropriations, um, and if we, uh, purchase this July first. If you guys don't want to see these sealed bids, um, and, and think I did something wrong, but they're behind me, um, if you guys want me to open them, we can. Just see what we can get for County Conservation, that we use other county parks for mowing, using the county betterment funds, not his department fund. But it don't seal? I think I did everything right?
Yeah, no, I think everyone, the brass has been fine, I think. I have no issue.
Yeah, we just, we just put the number, we got the numbers, and it's for your guys' approval, I mean.
We're going to, you mean to end one, Chad?
Well, we're trading one in, so the, the, the three major implements, they were all told where the mower was, and then even, um, to our allies, they all looked at it and everything, so the trade-in should, should be on that, so.
Was there two bids or three bids?
Three, I believe.
Oh, I guess I put in two then.
We'll see what's in here.
Yeah, right, there should be three there, right, there should be, there should be one from, from Boden Stein, from Ziegler, and from Red Power.
Oh, so I didn't see the Red Power one.
That's, that, they might be, might have been put together or something, I don't know.
All right. The one marked John Deere is on that first. You, so Chad sent me, so the first one is twenty-one thousand five hundred. And this is for, uh, DSO two thousand twenty-five, um, giving us twenty-five hundred dollars for the old two thousand twelve.
What did you say, the low ones?
Twenty-one. Twenty-one five. What's the, is there a deck size or anything on there? There should be. Seventy-two inch, okay. And the yellow marked is Ziegler's, hopefully there's two in here. Yeah, there is. So, Ziegler's ag equipment is for Ferris, diesel, seventy-two inch cut. Trading in two thousand twelve. Giving us three thousand four sixty for that, total price would be thirty-one thousand two forty. And then the last one is Red Power. Gravity, six hundred zero turn. Seventy-two inch deck.
I think that one is, that one a gas engine. Let me talk to them, they didn't have a diesel.
It is a gas.
So we, we requested that they still bid gas just so we had comparison and re. Basically paper trade and stuff with the three different companies.
Yep, this one's twelve thousand nine oh five, twelve thousand nine oh three ninety cents. And you're right, this one's a, it's a old, old term, but it's a gas engine. But they have a trade-in, about three thousand. So they're lining it up for county betterment, which you guys can see in full cash today, we have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in full cash. That is the local option sales tax that we get, that's the current balance. It keeps adding every month. Let's see those, let's see the warranties. If it passes today or if we don't have discussion, that passes us. If it does pass, you just can't get the check purchase until July second.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think the Bodensteiners, I think they were talking, they might be five or six months out actually on mower. So, yeah, the other ones I think were, you know, probably that standard month or two, you know? But that one was a little bit, so. At the end of the day, it's not ideal, but it is what it is, right? It's part of the process, so that was kind of, you know, getting things rolling and moving forward, so.
Looking here, great, we've got some, vital warranty, five-year fifteen hundred hour, no hour limit for the first two years. Dear, it's just thirty-six months or fifteen hundred hours, whichever comes first. And then no limitations for the first twenty-eight months. I don't see anything under this. Do you have all these something else?
We do, pretty much all our equipment is diesel at this point in time. We do have a diesel barrel out there that we use to fill that equipment. So other than our trucks, we switched our trucks over kind of in the last round, we went with gas there. Figuring that we're probably better off with gas engines, but the equipment so far, skid loader tractor, even that, the gator, so. It, this is the one piece of equipment, probably that I would argue probably shouldn't be a diesel just because that's kind of what, I mean, that thing gets rammed three, four days a week all summer long, so.
Next step in the bidding process, responsive, responsible, so, I mean, it's up to you guys to pair up the apples as best you can and move to your condition and to be justified which way you want to go, that's. Is that what's responsive and responsible, if you're guys are. Yep. I don't know, you seen a map of depth or have a recommendation or?
Yeah, I mean, I thought the bid were all, I mean, very good, and if you look at trade-in value, I think they were all in a pretty tight window as far as what the trade-in was. The, the big difference between the two diesels is, is obviously one gave a much larger government discount than, than the other one did. That was the big difference and the starting value on everything is all pretty, pretty close to the same from what I could see.
Do you have a review?
I mean, I, I, I honestly, I don't care, I mean, as far as brand, I, I try not to be brand loyal in this job, I might be asshole, but I try not to be serious. Again, right, I tell people all the time, my dad sold for pickup trucks all his life and that's what put food on the table growing up, so I'm very loyal towards Ford. We don't bid for it just because it doesn't make sense in my opinion, right? I'm a Ford dealer in the county, so, yeah, I, I understand the process, so. I, I'm not, I, I think all three mowers are fantastic, I think all three organizations are fantastic. I mean, if you're looking at numbers, I think the twenty-one five makes the most sense, it's got a little less warranty, but it's almost ten thousand dollars cheaper. Other than if you were to throw in the gas and I don't know that, you know, that's something that we want to get after at this point in time. So, I mean, out of the three, I would say that the Bodenstein one for twenty-one fifty would be my recommendation.
Twenty-one five?
Twenty-five hundred, sorry.
Was that the one that was six months out?
That was the one that was six months out, yeah, so. But we'd get through basically the snow season and get it, you know, pretty much get it ordered and get it here and then we'd have it on the ground ready to go and explain, that's kind of what it looks like. But who knows, you know, those things change as well, so.
You want a motion to accept that? All, make a motion to accept. Full trailer, twenty-one thousand five hundred.
A little more? And this is for two thousand twenty-six?
Yes. Yeah, so it's one turn any, I will make sure that, like, if they call them, I'll say, hey, we have one, I'll be like, well, July one, please.
Yeah, we can't get it right to them.
Get half this budget in. We did, we did have a budget in and that's Travis, you need to add your motion to, please, comes out of county betterment.
Good.
Cool. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Travis, second by Isaac, to approve the bid from Bodensteiners for the two thousand twenty-five John Deere diesel lawnmower in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred. To be spent out of county betterment funds for next fiscal year. So very much approve the purchase, but fund on next year's. And yes, Isaac, it was budgeted for. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion is carried. Thanks, Chad, for doing that.
Thank you. I will let those three bidders know and then go from there, so.
So, we can have more discussion on the agenda, but in that county betterment, there's another ten thousand for airport park stuff. But we can put that on next week's agenda or?
Yeah, I will be up, I have my board meeting tomorrow night, so if you want to put me on for next week, I can come up and then give department update review, the, the, we'll have that timber sale. The, the conservation board will approve that timber sale tomorrow night. I think, I don't know if there's any other big ticket items on there, but, so yeah, we can go over that stuff next week as well.
And you're going to send me a list of what you want to talk about?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. We do have a couple minutes here before ten, so claims, payroll was dated last Friday, May thirtieth. Is there a second? Motion by Travis, second by Scott, to approve the payroll claims that were dated May thirtieth, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. The prior bill, I only saw one, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for a credit card. That was their date, so their motion to approve the prior bill claim of two forty-nine. Sorry. Motion by Scott, second by Isaac, to approve the prior bill claim of two forty-nine, no sense. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion is carried. The normal claims, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the claim in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Ten o'clock, review and approve, check this out county volunteer handbook for a potential volunteer. Dave did reach out, good morning Dave.
Good morning.
Dave did reach out to me last week, has a name in mind that is willing to do some gardening. Weed pulling at our two or three flower beds up here in courthouse. Anything else, can you add to that?
No, it's just pertaining to the two flower beds, yeah. I have a volunteer that's a local resident that's actually really good with flower beds and things like that. And she has volunteered to take care of those and spruce them up a little bit if needed and just basically take care of them through the growing season, so.
Help you out a little bit with that?
Yep.
I'm not an expert.
I'm not an expert on flower beds either. They, they look okay, but they're nothing great right now.
If you guys are okay with this, Dave, can you figure out his name, please?
It would be Stacy Taylor.
I say people for volunteering, but we need to know what they're going to be doing just because of the liability risk. So same thing as your previous one. You are the head custodian, they work under you, they do a timesheet, pretty much like what the handbook states. Make sure they get all the training done, they are kind of a county employee, but they're a volunteer county employee and they have to understand that too. Any discussion, any concerns? And if it doesn't work out, let us know and then we can always terminate the volunteer position.
Sounds good.
If not, is there a motion to approve this individual? To start whenever the paperwork is all done, I guess. Second. Motion by Scott, second by Steve, to allow Stacy Taylor
Taylor?
To be a volunteer for the custodian department for diesel company. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried.
So can she come up to the hall or do you want to take a tour or?
Oh, I can take it to her, that would be my problem.
All right, Chad, you got one more second?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Sorry. Department update, I asked Dave to be on here, we've got some tree issues at the heritage.
Yeah, I guess to get started, the first thing at hand is in the back, I guess they call it backyard of the heritage residence, west of the bridge. We have a rather large-sized tree that has rotted and fell into the creek. Jake and I have both seen it. At the moment, it's not causing a problem, but I think the next heavy rain that we have will cause a huge problem.
It's about twenty feet in?
I would say twenty to thirty feet west of the bridge, back in there, so. Deb was lucky, had her son Ricky come out and look at it this weekend. And to get back in there, we're going to have to, Ricky would have to saw some trees out of the way to get back in there, which the trees that he would be sawing aren't too large and, and we kind of picked an area that would be the least invasive of trying to get back in there, so. He looked at the job, he is giving us a verbal quote of about eight hundred bucks to get back in there and get the tree, saw it up and pull it back into the wooded area far enough that it's not going to wash back into the creek and things like that.
So this creek is probably twenty foot wide by ten feet deep in that area. This tree has caused a dam. Pretty much the whole width and the whole depth. It's a very nice built dam by cornstalks and dirt. And nobody can get through it except for the bottom of the engine right now.
Right.
My worry would be when Dave and Deb told me about this last week. If we get anything above two, three, four inches, it's going to back up in our building, it's going to back up east of the bridge and then we could have a bigger mess. I think the tree is too big to go down there and cut with chainsaws and let mother nature push it down, I think it'll just keep catching.
Oh, definitely.
If you go down and look at it, like I said, I explained where it's at, there's two trees in the bed of the creek that's actually holding it from moving down, so.
And the trunk of this tree is, what would you say Jake, it's probably? Yeah, it's, it's a rather large tree and it's rotted back, I, I never noticed the tree back there until it's actually fell in the creek, but, you know, it's so densely wooded back in there that apparently this must have happened either last summer or last fall, I'm, I'm assuming that it rotted off enough to fall in there and yeah, it gets not a, if I could get down in there and do it just with a chainsaw and moving stuff by hand, I would, but this is far beyond that, so.
So the eight hundred dollars, those to get it out, take it away, everything or just to get it out of the water?
Uh, the eight hundred bucks, uh, the way I understood it would, would be clearing the path to get back in there. Sawing the tree up in pieces or whatever and having his machine pull it out. And basically, now you guys told me if we need to do something different, but I said that as long as you can get it back into the wooded area, shoved back in there to leave it, it would be okay. I mean, as long as we have it far enough back into the woods that it's not washing itself back into the creek again. Now, maybe the board would rather have the tree out of there and saw it up and gone. I'm not sure what your opinion would be, but I guess the quickest, easiest way would be to get it drug into the woods far enough that it wouldn't wash back.
Yeah, I think cut it in three, four spots, it'd be smaller enough. And then it'd start to camp. So, and at first I thought it was going to be under general maintenance, but then I said that's on the agenda for us to discuss if we have an issue with it, a concern with it. I think Dave does not have any mini extra small equipment to even drag it out, it would.
No, I, that, at minimum, you would need a decent-sized skid loader and I don't even know if that would do it.
Second thing, we'll go back to that if we could, the second thing is where the grass is, you guys can drive by, there's what, probably, I think you talked to Chad about this last week. I'd say at least over two hundred volunteer saplings growing in that grass area on both sides of the creek. A couple cottonwood trees that are probably five foot tall and need to be cut or sprayed. So this is where Chad came in, so.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Chad last week after we had looked at it. You tell me if, correct here Chad, when you guys have time, you could get in there with your machine, your chopper. And get these trees cut down there, they're growing really fast, I can't believe how fast they grow. It's like, they, it's almost like they sprouted up overnight in there, but.
I think somebody did it about three, four years ago.
Yeah, we had.
They're old or was it kind of conservation?
We had conservation out there, was it two years ago?
I feel like it's two or three, yeah, somewhere in there.
So, yeah, it didn't take long for this stuff to come back again. I'm not sure if there's a method that we could use to prevent these from coming back that often, but with that correct, but there's plenty of moisture in there, so it grows pretty quick.
Yeah, well, and that is something too, the misconception is that you cut something off, you think it's a renewed seed that sprouts out, but it's got this root mass there, right? So it does, it's not a little seed that's just starting to grow roots in the top, it just has root base there, so they shoot back. I mean, this is, this is what we do, right, in our purr and model lot areas, so. Yeah, if you guys are all right with it, I, I, we'd be fine when we get a chance, we can just mow it off and then the best thing that we, what we like to do is when it comes back and re-flushes, just try and spray it. Put some selective brush killer on it and that helps that got stuck back pretty good. Take it a couple rounds, but.
So that was that update, I think, if you would be willing to do that, Chad, appreciate it.
I mean, yeah, well, like I said, as long as we're on a time crunch, we'll wonder when we can get to it and, yeah, we'll see if we can. Do you want us to spray it as well if we get a chance, I mean, when, when they're out?
If, if, if possible, yeah.
I don't imagine you probably have that chemical or anything, it would be awesome, it would seem like it would just be a good fit for us to, it's not a big area, it won't take very long, so.
Yeah, I do not have the chemicals that it would take to probably knock that stuff down and keep it down, so.
So that was that update, so let's talk about that tree that's in that creek. You guys okay for this to be done or?
Yeah. Do we have to open it up or did something like this?
I think it falls under maintenance again, it's a special tree, it's under eight hundred bucks, under a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
I think Dave has the authority to, they can choose any vendor.
Other than Ricky, I don't know right offhand anybody else that is really into. Other than Ricky, I don't know right offhand anybody else that is really into that type of business, I I don't know if a regular tree removal service would be interested in it, because it is a little bit more in-depth than just cutting the tree, then rolling it away, so. It's basically having the equipment to get it pulled out of the creek bed is the big part.
You have to dig out all those cornstalks too that are up against it.
Right.
Consensus strike, Chad. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Can you get it down before it breaks?
I'm gonna call it immediately.
That's a pretty big tree.
Yeah.
I'm shocked to see this dam about five, six feet tall. And you probably only noticed it when all the new stuff was growing back and.
Honestly, I didn't notice it last fall.
Didn't did, or a couple months.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, thanks. Thanks for Dave. Good life. Thank you too.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever you guys definitely do.
All right, we've got a bunch of resolutions here that we usually do in June, um, this is the outcome of budget that was certified. And Sheila and the auditor, the secretary has approved, or has gone through these resolutions. So the first one is review and approve resolution six-two-twenty-five-twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six. This is the appropriations.
Right, this is everything that we did for the last couple of eight months in the budget, which has been put together and already makes the chart.
So if you guys have that open, it is So this is the normal resolution, I think our county attorneys looked at them, I think we got the names spelled now. So this is all departments, like one is ours, so three sets, so just example, board supervisors, three hundred and twelve thousand, five fifty-five. That is a combination of GB, GS, any other fund that comes into our department budget. Everybody else is below. Non-departmental ninety-nine, Sheila did a nice job of listing all those nonprofits out. Of like, radio communication project, council aging example. All the way down, gives us a total of nineteen million one hundred and eleven and a hundred and thirty dollars.
And then we go through the transfers. We've talked about different transfers throughout it, whether we do it or not, it has to be budgeted in. So, um, right now we have what we've talked about, two million and five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars worth of transfer. With a grand total of expenditure and transfers being twenty-one million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And if you look on the set, the third page. So the third page batches our, um, budget on the department management in service areas.
Now this, uh, we've talked about it before, but this gives them full authority to spend their full budget. They only could we have a purchase policy in place over ten thousand dollars. So, with that being said, this is the last step to allow the funds to be into their departments, uh, come July first. It gives the auditor, like libraries are in there, we have a contract for, but just all this stuff is what we've been working on for the past seven, eight months.
Motion to approve resolution number zero-six dash zero-two dash twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Isaac to approve resolution six-two-twenty-five-dash-twenty-one. Um, this one is called appropriations resolution. Any discussion? If not, roll call Steve.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Scott. Our jig, aye, motion is per five to zero.
And I have thirty-one that I need, so.
Yeah, so next one is review and approve resolution six-two-twenty-five-twenty. This is establishing payroll procedures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. Yeah, we gotta have this. So, there was one, um, contract slash person that we did not have discussion on. Um, we just wanted to be upfront with you all. Uh, we have, Sheila does have two resolutions, same number prepared, depending where this board is gonna stand on it. Um, it is the safety coordinator. Were we gonna put in a three percent for her, it's like, uh, sixty bucks? I think we should, just because we did for land use administrator, and we did that for a lot of other county employees. So. It's up to you guys, um, but there's two areas in resolution twenty that would have to be changed. If you guys want to allow the three percent to be added to the two thousand dollars. I felt that we didn't have discussion on it, so. Otherwise, I booked it over at all. Resolution twenty is pretty much what we've done the past. So resolution twenty, the change would be on page three. Under G. It can either say two thousand as prepared, or the other copy says two thousand and sixty dollars. What do you guys want to do? Otherwise, Dave worked with this, I believe also, which is.
Yes, thirty is done, us, this was all the other you know, seven thousand, kind of honor how we were paying people, so. I think we're doing our best now to not pay people until they actually work and earn their funds, but also comply with the code, it's hard. Because as you guys know, elected officials, we are by statute to get all of our pay period in that year, regardless of when the pay period is called. And sometimes that is easy sometimes, it's weird.
And actually, I was questioning on that this morning, and so we pulled up last year's resolution and everything was covered.
Twenty-third is we'll get paid on the twenty-seventh.
So there'll be two days this year, actually, there was one, the first two days of this fell perfectly on Friday and Monday. Fiscal year wraps around in two days this year. But unless we have a separate pay period, which I gave you the look when I said that, um, it's not gonna happen. This is the best way to do it.
Yep.
Any discussion on what I mentioned on this resolution, if you guys want the one that says two thousand, or if you guys want the one that says two thousand and sixty?
Oh, cool, sixty.
Anybody else have a different feeling on it?
That's the right way to go. I agree.
So you have the one that says
Yep.
sixty. That was the only change to that resolution, not knowing where this board is gonna stand on it. So the new one for resolution six-two-twenty-five-twenty will have that change, everybody does. So when you sign it, it will say under G, two thousand and sixty dollars. Is there a motion under? Oh yeah. Yeah, we do. So it's in the budget, it's under general services, that's where HR is paid for. It's it's all in there, because it's over like, it's like ninety thousand dollars for.
Yeah, okay, we'll find it.
All right, any other discussion on resolution twenty? If not, is there a motion over?
Make a motion to approve resolution six dash two dash twenty-five dash twenty.
Sorry. Motion by Scott, second by Steve to approve resolution six-two-twenty-five-dash-twenty, establishing payroll procedures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. Any discussion? If not, Scott.
All right, Steve.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jake, aye, motion is carried, five to zero. Approve fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six employees' salary wages, which is Yep, you guys should have got that all, but, um, it's been looked through many times by staff and myself and you guys last week, so, um, I think all the columns are in the right spot. You guys all know what kind of went through, budget work session, discussion, public hearing. Supervisors took no increase, and the board of health, environmental health, kept it at the same, which is also no increase. All the other ones, um, got put in as the department head or elected official suggested. I know Dave, you saw this, but Michelle will be at the twenty-nine ninety-nine, I was trying to get the thirty, but adding you can't give the thirty, so.
Can, I just did four percent, is what I did.
Yeah, but it still rounds down to twenty-nine.
Oh.
Just for discussion, but she'll be at twenty-nine ninety-nine. A lot of the clerks got moved out, like the budget was approved.
Yeah, this, um, one was a little bit more difficult because, um, it was a lot of adjustments for different departments, so that's why we had all the departments make sure that they gave us their list and and the amount so that we got it right.
One question I had is the CRE may went up nine, almost nine and a half percent. Is that number correct?
Um, let me check that out.
Nine percent?
So it should have been only six percent. If you take sixty-one I can give that update too when I the EMA commission voted on Wednesday to give a six percent increase.
I thought you said nine percent.
Yeah, so.
I think that's why this whole number is, I get it right?
So if you took sixty-one-two-eighty-nine oh five, current, times six percent. Should be sixty-four-nine-six-six-three-nine.
Yeah, six, so.
It should be what? Six-four.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions? So I think what the issue was, like, we had this discussion on Wednesday. The budget that was certified current year had a six percent in it last year, but they only gave him, I think, a two percent. So nobody ever fixed it, and then when he went to make his new budget, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody watching, he put a six percent in on the last year's number. See what I'm getting at? So under his budget, he has like a nine percent in there, but they only gave him a six percent. So the budget is a little bit higher than what it should be for a six percent increase. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve, but we did have the date on there, um, on June second, over the top left corner. Just if there's any changes throughout the year or people either, so we all know when this document was prepared. So now you will see this, and we requested it with the June second, which would be today's date as approved. Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five-twenty-six employees' salaries slash wages? So. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve to approve the fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six employees' salaries slash wages. Any discussion? If on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carried. Now we have about six res- two, three, five resolutions, and there are normal transfers.
Now, there's no, um, these are the transfers that we talked about and put in the budget. Now, I was taught that we do all the transfers at the beginning of the budget season, but if you guys don't want to, I just apologize.
I just brought that up this morning to Sheila, and you guys can hear me out if not. So there's two resolutions that we don't use currently, uh, we didn't use it this year, it is the two transfers to EMS. So I just posed the question, why do we do them now and give her the authority to do it when we have to discuss that anyway with the six cities? I just wanna make sure if an auditor comes in to replace, or what happens if something happens to you, that they don't just transfer that money into a restricted fund. And then it's like, oh, you gave me permission on June second to do it, uh, but we really didn't need it. So, just.
It it really doesn't bother me, so it just, if you guys want to wait, I am
It just screws up our numbers, which is twenty-four and twenty.
Just the resolution said I can just void it, that's fine.
But we can do it too, it's just, once we do it though, then the auditor has the right to transfer that. If the funds are there.
Until we need it.
That's what, that's my view.
Okay, so then that would be, um,
Resolution twenty-three.
And twenty.
And twenty-four.
Okay. Does everybody consensus to wait, okay?
To wait on those two. So the books will show avoid that, um, resolution twenty-four and twenty from three twenty-four. So let's talk about twenty-two then. Resolution for RSV transfer, secondary revenue fund.
And I don't transfer this all at one one time, I really, I do so much after each
Tax collection.
Tax collection.
So resolution six-two-twenty-five-twenty-two, we always do this in June. Um, this is one hundred percent of his available RSV at two million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, like Sheila said, this will be two payments, uh, one usually in late November, and I think another one usually in end of May-ish, I don't know. But Sheila watched the books and only give as much as she feels comfortable to give that total.
I made a motion to approve resolution number zero-six dash zero-two dash zero.
Six-two-twenty-five dash twenty. Resolution for RSV to secondary revenue. Is there a second? Sorry. Motion by Travis, second by Steve to approve resolution six dash two dash twenty-five dash twenty-two, resolution for inter-fund operating transfer from RSV to secondary revenue fund. Any discussion? If not, roll call Travis.
Uh, Steve.
Aye.
Travis, Isaac.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, aye, motion carried, five to zero. The next one then, we'll move on to twenty-five. Resolution twenty-five will state this is where we talked about I use the word downsides of the restricted fund of the landfill. So we are gonna transfer seventy-five thousand from the landfill fund to general basic fund. This is the inter-fund operating transfer.
Make a motion to approve resolution number zero-six dash zero-two dash twenty-five dash twenty-five, resolution for inter-fund operating transfers.
Is there a second? Sir. Isaac. At almost the same time. Motion by Steve, second by Isaac to approve resolution six-two-twenty-five-dash-twenty-five. Inter-fund operating transfer from landfill fund to the general basic fund in the amount of seventy, shall not exceed the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Any discussion on twenty-five? And now a roll call, Steve.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Chad. Jake, aye, motion carried, five to zero. And then twenty-six is the other seventy-five to RSV. Inter-fund operating transfer not to exceed seventy-five thousand from landfill fund to road service basic. Is there a motion to approve?
Hold on.
Motion by Travis, is there a second? Sir. Motion by Travis, second by Scott to approve resolution six dash two dash twenty-five dash twenty-six. Inter-fund operating transfer from landfill fund to road service basic fund in amounts of seventy-five thousand dollars. Any discussion? It's, uh, roll call Travis.
Aye.
Scott. Scott.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried. Is that it, Sheila, I heard you?
I think that's it.
Alright, committee has signed it. Travis, seven?
No.
Are you? Did I, Isaac?
Uh, you said, I don't know, I think I said I want to add.
You want to give them a bit? What's that? You want to give the update on that one?
Oh, no.
Well, you must have.
Alright, I got it, sorry.
Scott's the all-time. My, my man.
We, uh, discussed with six, seven o'clock, six fifty-nine, over at the nine oh one meeting. And then what else did we do? Did you have a claim over? We had, we had an English group play. But it was over, over there, so, one for ten thousand dollars, uh, real short meeting. Yep, there's a while here for him, but once we got a forum, the meeting's over in about five minutes, so.
Uh, Scott, you have anything? Or, sorry, Steve?
No.
Forgot. Um, so I had two county social services, so my first one on Wednesday, um, I'm not grabbing minutes here. It was up at Cresco, um, I've just read this to Michelle. Mary McKennell, C, S, as CEO, reported that CSS has approximately one month left of our regular day-to-day operations at the mental health region. CSS has sold back all the vehicles to Brown Chevrolet and Alcatraz. Member counties and providers have reached out to CSS and identified items they would like to have. Some CSS offices already closed during this month, like your team on Chickasaw, Howard and North Springs office was closed on June thirtieth. CSS met with one of the new disability access points, CICS, to discuss our client case loads of who are currently funded. July first, two thousand twenty-five is the inflammation date of behavioral health ASO and ADAPS, to provide behavioral health and disability services in Iowa. CSS will work with ADAP region, that's taken over for our area, providing your own handoffs with clients when contracted by the CICS to get this coordinated. This is the sidebar, CSS has not been, has not heard anything from Iowa Primary Care Association, the new behavioral health, about this yet. CSS has one employee resigned this past month, as of today, they are currently nineteen employees. I had number eight on this, was human resource. Um, we did approve option one, remember I talked about, uh, the trust fund of the insurance? Through HR and other people, um, they've decided to give, let the claims run out for health insurance on June thirtieth, pay those claims prior to the runoff, and then any excess funds, probably over two hundred thousand, will be the DHHS responsibility to get out of the trust fund. Nobody's going to get a dollar, like, option three was going to give some money to each employee, that is not what happened, so. The trust fund with ICAP will be DHHS's responsibility to take. Uh, what else was there? That's about it, um, I think the pool cash is supposed to sit on about six million dollars for the next two months. We did approve the closeout plan to be sent to the state, um, as of today, we have not heard anything about the state approving it. If they don't approve it, um, I guess there was some discussion on what's going to happen if they don't approve the closeout plan. It sounds like all staff will be just done on June thirtieth, and DHHS will take over from there. But right now, there is three people coming back as contractors, uh, the CEO, the business manager, and the HR person to close out client bills and the checkbooks, um, sometime in July and August, on the hourly rate of a hundred dollars an hour, um, only as needed. Um, that isn't our plan, but that plan has not been accepted by the state yet. One month left. Our next meeting is June twenty-fifth in Mitchell County. They are having, uh, all employee, uh, picnic on June thirtieth in Chelmsford City to bring all the devices and IG, NGT. NGT will come and swipe them all, clean them all out, make sure that there's no person information or any, uh, provider information on any laptop at that point. So on June thirtieth in Chelmsford City, uh, all nineteen people will turn in all the electronics. And, yep. Any questions with the mental health region? They all know since I'm very shortly. My second meeting was EMA on Wednesday night, the twenty-eighth. Pretty much on the agenda was, uh, approval of the recovery support function infrastructure, um, for the emergency support. Approved the fiscal year annual training requirements, and then a department update slash salary. Just like the nine oh one board, you guys had five people there, we only had five people at one time. So it was very hard to get corn, but we got it. Um, so with the bill of three to two, the director did receive a six percent pay increase. He had a little chart here that he compared District Two, like, when I should consider Gordo County's EMA pay, and then he did do twelve, um, seven counties, that's a county population of twelve thousand people, so. So that's what we got. Any questions on EMA or CSS? If not, I keep track of the agenda. Discuss future agenda items, um, one board member will not be here next Monday, um, let me know if you guys want anything on.
We'll put something about the Tiff projects or.
So yeah, I got a note here too for Tiff projects slash, Dave, help me out, I mean, you were here when Travis was here, as far as a little bit. He said wait a little bit, I know there's some discussion between me and Scott about when is too soon enough or not. I guess what's our first priority is to figure out what projects go or don't go?
Well, I think first thing I'm saying, if you can do it or not. I think that's a presumption. I didn't hear any vocal.
No.
No's what he was presenting, but I didn't know if he believed it, wash it over, talking like constituents or not, but I would say that is the first thing. Is do you want to engage in Tiff, and if so, then how much do you want to engage in, and what projects would be, would be your first on the list, that's what I suggest.
I need to reach out to Homeland, when is that discussion? Before we, correct?
I think that's part of the discussion, if you want to include money for them or not, and if so, how you want to do that, or how much, or what you want to do with them, that's all.
Is that right?
I think questions are going to have to discuss.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we need to set up a order, and then, I know we, you know, we originally had a, a list of priorities or whatever, but I think some of that list has been rearranged, and we need to take another look and say, you know, if we are going to go forward, we start.
I agree.
With one member down, do we want to wait though?
That's a pretty big discussion, I think we'll all should be here.
Good, fair enough, that's what I was trying to get to. Alright, so that might have to wait until June sixteenth. Is there anything else for the future agenda items? If not, is there anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? So.
Fair.
Motion by Scott, second by Travis to adjourn at ten thirty-nine, if on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.